And stand for our pledge. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide it behind materials through the boards review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
Sure.
Motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ruben, any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, no? This order, do we have a report from our liaison?
Yes, we do.
Hi, welcome back to the school board meeting. I feel like these are so far apart. We actually have a lot of stuff that's going on right now. Things are starting to pick up again, which is really fun. So the Quiz Bowl is picking up and they have a meet next week with Clark County. And the basketball teams are picking up. They have a game, they will have games with Luray. I think the JV is staying home while the varsity is going away. The Quiz Bowl also has another day, another meet that week, the same week as the basketball with Luray, but they have it with Paige. And then basketball then has a games, games with Madison County on the 23rd. The TikTok Talent Show concludes on the 11th. And the senior raffle for the pod room also concludes on the 11th. Wrestling is picking up, but no meets are scheduled on the staff calendar yet. There have only been a handful of COVID cases in the county since I last saw you guys, saw you guys. There was one at the elementary school, but everything seems to be handled well. Thanks.
All right. I feel like we owe her a thank you or something. She's, yeah, it's good, it's good to see her student liaison. Metaphoric donations?
Okay, I have a few to report. I have two donations from Jean Adams and Sons, each $200 to the FFA. Mark Ramey donated $250 to the horticulture program. Rhonda Ramey donated gifts for the RCES gift drive for the community at Christmas. And Meg Flanagan donated $200 for the FFA.
Thank you. And we will accept donations during the consent agenda. Not that we would turn them away, but we have to accept them. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from November 10th meeting?
Sure.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, no? This order, Mr. Groth, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have, and everything looks to be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Groth. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion, Mr. Ruben, is there a second? Second, Mr. Groth, is that you, Mr. Groth?
Yes.
All in favor, all in favor, aye? Aye, close, no? This order.
I have a question about that.
Question about what?
About the consent agenda.
Yeah.
There was, didn't it, we didn't have a homeschool report in there? Is there a reason?
No changes.
No change?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Dr. Grimsley?
Thank you so much. Well, the report of the superintendent today, we're going to start off with a wonderful presentation from our wonderful Wednesday camp folks that are many here. So Jenny Kapsa, if you come to the mic and start us off.
Hello, so I'm Jenny Kapsa and I'm the Family Financial Education Coordinator and a Profile Graduate Coordinator for Happy County Public Schools. And I've also been lucky enough to be a part of the wonderful Wednesday Day Camp. And I'm excited to tell you all about it and we have some guests here today who are willing to tell you a little bit about it from their perspective.
Can everybody hear her okay?
Okay.
Okay, good.
I know.
Just making sure. I notice.
Is that okay?
You can tilt it up.
I want to tilt it closer.
How bad?
That's okay.
All right, good, okay. So this all started when we first heard that the school model was going to be a hybrid model. And members of the Rapid County Kids Coalition got together and started talking about, is there anything that we could do on Wednesdays? We just come from having these wonderful, successful summer programs and we were really still very excited about all of that. So we started talking and chatting and started, and talked to Dr. Grimsley about some ideas that we had. And from those ideas, the wonderful Wednesday Day Camp was born. This program is in existence to support kids, counselors, who are high school students and certainly members of the community, as well as the school itself. A lot of stars had to align in order for this program to be successful. And a lot of things had to come together very quickly and luckily they did. First and foremost, thanks to you and Dr. Grimsley and the Board of Supervisors, CARES Act funding was provided to pay for this camp. And that meant that none of the campers or their families had to pay a registration fee so that they could come for free. So there was not an additional burden on families. It also meant that our counselors could have a job. They could come to camp on Wednesdays and help oversee and run the program and get paid something to do that. Thanks to Mike Tupper and Al Payne, buses were provided. So buses are provided for students at various locations from around the county. That provides kids transportation to and from. It also provides jobs for these bus drivers on Wednesdays. Thanks to USDA, we had lunches, as you know, provided to all of the students. And Mandy Butler, who was the person who really coordinated the effort of getting those lunches made and then transported to camp for our campers. This also provided employment for those who were putting those lunches together and transporting them to camp. Thanks to the 4HD Center, the space was available that we needed. I mean, with COVID, we needed a lot of space because we really needed to have these kids divided into small groups. And the 4HD Center is huge and frankly, they're going through kind of a rough time right now, as you can imagine. So if the center was available to us for use, and it worked out beautifully. Thanks to Barbara Black, Sally Morgan and the Ragboard, they agreed to pay for three artists each week, up to three artists each week, to come and to be workshop instructors. So we have six different workshops that are offered every single Wednesday and they agreed to pay for half of those, which also obviously supports members of this community. Thanks to Family Futures, our program, my future program assistant, Lacy Jenkins, was able to be hired and come to camp and oversee the kindergarten and first grade camping cluster and offer my future programs to these kids every single Wednesday. Thanks to the Mental Health Association of Fakir County, they let their staff come out to lead programs about stress management, how to maintain calmness, they made kindness rocks. Thanks to the Commit to Be Fit team, every single week, our campers and counselors participated in Commit to Be Fit activities. Thanks to members of the community who just volunteered their time to come out and lead a workshop to us. And thanks to Courtney Atkins, who was constantly on call for me if I had any questions about COVID and safety regulations, she helped me tremendously. So it took a whole lot of people in this community to make this program come together and be the successful, wonderful program that it is. The camp itself is structured around three different clusters of kids. So the clusters are kids that are divided into grades. So we have the kindergarten and first graders in one cluster, second and fourth in another, fifth and sixth in another. And every cluster has two groups, if that makes sense. There is a theme of outer space. Each one of these groups has its own name and the counselors created posters and the rooms are all very decorated and decorative, showing off their camp name. We have four amazing camp staff that were hired to oversee these clusters. Stephanie Cash, she oversees, she oversees the fifth and sixth grade camping cluster. And Stephanie is also in charge then of getting homework because homework is a big piece of what we do at this camp as well. She is responsible for getting homework from teachers and when we don't get homework from teachers, she goes online and she finds things that are age appropriate and grade appropriate for these students to do. Lacy Jenkins, again oversees the kindergarten and first graders. And again, she leads all sorts of My Future activities so that the kids are constantly working with coins and counting and numbers. So she's, and she's amazing at that. And then Allison Jenkins, Allison Jenkins oversees the second through the fourth graders and she's our camp nurse. And we are so lucky to have a camp nurse. Terry Richardson, we hired a few days, maybe the second or third times, the third week at camp, he helps with our fifth and sixth grade group. All of these clusters are generally in one lodge area but divided, except for the fifth and sixth graders who are in two different lodges. And we really needed adult supervision in each one, so Terry Richardson came along and he was a perfect addition. We had nearly 100 students between our campers and our counselors register for this program. So you can imagine how busy our staff has been. The way that the camp works, I just want to say about the program because it's just so much fun. So we start off the day around 8:00 AM, a bunch of the staff show up and it's been chilly, but doable to be outside most of the time. We start off with making a big campfire. We have a campfire cooking workshop, so we kind of huddle around that a little bit, six feet apart though. Huddle six feet apart. And we talk about our day. The campers then arrive at nine o'clock. They all come in on buses. There's a huge campfire circle at the 4H Education Center. And so before camp even began, I went out and actually measured, literally measured six feet apart and put little stickers so that the kids would know exactly where to sit. So we are able to come together, which I think is so important. So we come together every morning, we talk about our day, we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we sing silly songs, we go over our camp rules. You have to wear your shoes, your shirt, your smile, your shtick tag. And at the end of the day, if somebody acknowledges you for a good deed, you can earn a sticker on your shtick tag. And then once we have our little morning, our morning meet and greet, everybody goes off with their camp group and they go off to participate in their workshops. So remember, we've got three clusters and there are two groups in every cluster. So you've got Group A and Group B. So Group A and Group B go off and do their workshops. After their 50-minute workshop, they have snacks, they participate in the Commit to Be Fit, Commit to Be Fit activity, and then they swap and do the opposite workshop in that cluster. So again, there's six going on at all times. The workshops have included line dancing, creative writing, learning about hiking the acolyte trail, genetics and camouflage, career exploration, outdoor and indoor cooking, yoga, drumming, making stress balls and calming glitter jars and kindness rocks, juggling, sewing, lots and lots of art projects to include hat design and decoration, making paper owls, origami, pornhub dolls, using vegetation as natural dyes, ornament making, walking stick decorating, fortune tellers and God's eyes. I mean, that's, I'm sure I even left some off here, but there were very many, many different kinds of workshops and it was always exciting for these kids. After the workshops, the children have lunch followed by some outside time where they can, and there's plenty of beautiful outside space at the 4H Education Center. I don't know if you've been out there before, but it's really worth going out to take a look at it. It's huge and vast, which is what we needed. And then at one o'clock, all of the kids and all of the counselors, we have homework time. Now, some of the counselors are able to do homework time earlier in the day, we allotted some time for them. And then at one o'clock, all of the kids have to do homework time and the counselors can help them. So if the kids need assistance, the counselors are there to assist them. And we've got some really great pictures, I think you'll see in a little while, of some of the counselors, again, sitting six feet apart reading a book to the kids or the kids using dry erase boards and they're doing spelling words or math problems. So the homework time's been very successful. It is a 50-minute period of time for some of the little biddies that can seem like a long time, but Lacy's made it so much fun. So the kids are writing with shaving cream or they're outside going with chalk, you know, for the fifth and sixth graders if they don't have, they say they don't have 50 minutes of homework. We have a huge box of books that were donated from the elementary school and now these kids can just pick up a book. But it's a quiet time, everybody has to be quiet and be studying or reading something for 50 minutes. At 1:50, we start our thankful or community service projects. This, I think, is a really important component to our camp as well. It's a time where we say, wow, who do we need to thank for making this camp possible? You know, so we, today I just delivered thank you cards to the bus drivers and to the woman who delivers our lunches. And some of them were the cutest cards you have ever seen. We've made banners, we've made a quilt that we have to donate to the elementary school. We've made, again, thank you cards for various people and organizations in our community. We make caramel, caramel apples for the seniors, the high school seniors. We collected gifts for Angel Tree kids, each cluster adopted one Angel Tree child and we have bags and bags and bags. We also have adopted three senior angels. So again, we're collecting for them. And one of the best things that we did was we let the kids, they all made thankful bags and they all had to write in their own little groups, thankful cards to each other that they put into their thankful bags. I made them write one for me just because I'm selfish. And so if I feel a loss, I'll pull out a little card and it'll say, dear Ms. Jenny, you are nice. Oh, you know, that's all I needed. You know, it's just enough, so it was, it's a great little thing. At 2:30 every day, we meet back at the campfire circle, so kind of the end of the day, how was your day? And people can nominate each other for doing good deeds, again, and somebody can get a sticker if they do a good deed. We also have, we have awards that we pass out. We really are very on top of, of the coronavirus and the safety protocols that go on with this. So we do have awards. One is the Coro No No Award because as you get within six feet of somebody, you're supposed to say, Coro No No. So that is to the group that practices the best social distancing. We have our runner-up six feet away award. And then we have a silver and gold award for the group that has shown the most kindness to each other during the day. And the kids get really excited about those awards and they get to hang in their little rooms the following week of camp. And then at three o'clock, the kids leave and we look forward to them coming back the next week. Just so, just to quickly go over the safety protocols that we follow, the camp rules are in every single group's room so that they can see them at all times. We go over them every single day, every morning before they go off into their, to their workshops. All of the kids have their own little bowls that they decorated full of their own little supplies. The counselors and staff are very good at wiping down people's chairs, throwing up in bathrooms. We sing funny songs and have reminders about social distancing. We even have a sticker chart in the room so that if somebody does something that really, where they really are showing us that they're doing a good job of really washing their hands or they make a production of it, we'll put a little sticker up on their sticker chart and after some of these stickers, they get a little prize. And last week, we had King Coro No No. My son, who just got back from college, he didn't have anything to do and he wore a little cardboard crown and a tree skirt and came out as King Coro No No and passed out candy to the kids who were social distancing well. So I mean, it's, we are on top of it. We are talking constantly about staying six feet away, washing camp, you know, being safe because we want this camp to continue. The camp has been tweaked and tweaked since we first began and it's just, it's a wonderful, happy place. And it just brings a lot of joy.
You know, you're creating great memories during a very difficult time for them.
I was going to try to say that.
Yeah, you are, and so I'm giving you a break right now, so you can.
Thank you so much, yes.
But it's gonna be, when they look back, a great light in the middle of a very difficult time for them, so it's very appreciated.
Well, thank you. And we love it. I mean, it fills us up. It's for us too, it's selfish, you know? Quickly, I know we don't have a lot of time, I promise not to take too long, I just wanted to read quickly to you just a few things that some of the parents have said. "I think the program is very successful and a great advantage to working parents. The campers have a safe place to be during the day, they can have fun and receive the help that they need to complete assignments." "Counselors also have the chance to complete assignments, but the job also allows them to gain work experience, especially if they are interested in field, in a field involving children." And then I'll skip to last one because this is my favorite one. "I would love to see this as a permanent event after the pandemic."
I know.
I just thought I'd throw that out there.
See, that's what I, that's what I wondered, how do you, how do you, do we change the school schedule so their wonderful Wednesday always?
Well, hey, let's talk. My teachers would love that. I'm in.
I learned a lot when I was, the field trips were the thing that I remember, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's impossible, it's not a big one.
Well, so we do have a few people, again, I know we're not going to take this over completely, just very, they're going to briefly just tell you their perspectives of camp and what this program has meant to them. And then we have a very short slideshow to show you. So thank you again so much for supporting this program and we're thrilled to say that it's going to be offered in the spring and we're delighted. So thank you. So let's see, so our counselors, come on down. Let me do counseling, come on down.
Jenny, it's also, it's also been a great opportunity for some young people who are the counselors. One of my grandchildren is a counselor on Wednesday.
Oh, boy.
So she, I mean, she's learning a lot. It's a great experience for young, for teenagers.
All right, do it, go and say who you are.
Hi, I'm Lana and I was a lead counselor for these second through fourth grade and you call our group the Sons. And I found myself excited to come to this camp every week. And it gave me something to afford to during troubling times like these where there was really nothing else to do. And it was evident in the kids too, they were super excited to come, always willing to do the activities and participate. And it was just an overall happy, fun place to be here in Tackley.
Great, thank you.
Hold on one second.
I'm a junior here in high school and at first I was a little skeptical, you know, with staying six feet away, especially with a bunch of little kids and everything like that. And, you know, honestly, with these, you know, wonderful women and Jenny, staying vigilant all the time, you know, six feet, stay away, you know, washing hands, wipe that down, everything. You know, honestly, it's been really fun and just like Lana said, it's, you know, it's been a nice bright spot, you know, dark spot right now, see her. But you know what, all these kids are, you know, being happy and like you said, you know, nice memories, not only for the kids, but for us too. I mean, I'm, you know, watching these kids, I mean, I have a lot of fun and I never knew I was gonna have fun, you know, watching kids like this. And it's just, it's been great, it has been, so.
And you gotta know that they think you're the coolest one there, you know, they're like, hey.
Thank you.
Because you're, you're not an adult, but.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Williams and I'm the lead counselor with the kindergarten through first grade group at the morning for Wednesday camp. First off, I want to start off by saying how much fun this camp really is. Having this camp allows the campers to come and be around kids of their own age while staying six feet apart and improve their social skills during these tough and challenging times. The campers are also able to get help with their schoolwork if they need it. We have a dedicated time during the day that is strictly for the campers to work on homework and if any of the campers need help, the counselors are there to help them. Another great thing about the wonderful Wednesday camp is we get lunches delivered to us for the school. So we just want to thank the cafeteria workers for their hard work. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody that has made the wonderful Wednesday camp possible during these tough and challenging times. I look forward to this camp in the spring.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Colin Pond and I am the seventh editor of the RCES and I am a wonderful Wednesday Day Camp CIT from the kindergarten and first grade cluster. Wednesdays are our favorite day of the week. It's the only day of the week that my brother, who's a camper, and I are fussing our icon because we don't want to be late. I, I love all the amazing activities we do each week. I enjoy working with the young students on their homework and I love the opportunity to be social in a program environment. I keep safe, to keep safe, keep our distance by saying Coro No No. And you have to say it with attitude because safety is important. I was sad that camp was canceled this week, but I'm super excited that wonderful Wednesdays will continue next semester. I want to thank, thank you for supporting students in this COVID environment by allowing us to have these wonderful Wednesday camps.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm Jenny Pond, I'm a school employee and a parent of two elementary students here at Rapid County Elementary. As a professional, the wonderful Wednesday camp has been wonderful for our team counselors for employability and building leadership skills. Two of them are teachers for tomorrow, so this is another opportunity for them to expand and explore the profession. So I'm very excited about that. And surprisingly, it's also boosted academics at RCHS. We weren't expecting this, but Jenny does a very good job of diligently checking every counselor's grades weekly. And if a student is not before, I guess they should, she warns them that they may not be able to participate that week in camp. So just a warning, many times will give them the boost that they need to get their work done. So it has been very, very helpful with motivation this semester, so we are very appreciative of that. As a mother, I am very appreciative of the fact that, you know, our children have missed birthday parties and sports and slumber parties and get togethers with their friends for nine months now. And this is the one positive outlook and opportunity for them to socialize with their friends in a safe environment. And it's very, very much needed for them socially and emotionally. So as a mom, I'm super appreciative of you guys supporting this for our children. It's also a blessing not to have to feed them breakfast or pack them lunch and to be on the give and drop them off and go. So as a working mother, that's very helpful too. I also think it's important to sing the praises of Jenny Kapsa here tonight. It takes a very, very special person to put a program together like this that meets the needs of students of all ages and all backgrounds. And it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of planning, it's forward-thinking and humor and troubleshooting and it's so much work behind the scenes. And she makes it look very easy and I know that it's not. And sometimes we fail to recognize just how much this, how much work this takes. So thank you to Jenny Kapsa and her wonderful team that she has with her. We are truly blessed, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'm kidding.
I could listen to this all night.
My name is Allison Jenkins. I am the camp nurse at camp. I actually grew up in Rapid County, my parents still live here. I went to Rapid County from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. I currently live in Fakir County, but have two kids at the elementary school right now. And what I have to say about this camp is I grew up going to 4H camps, I went to overnight camp as a camper and as a teen. And it was the exciting, the most exciting moment and I thought I got to be camp nurse and go back here. I mean, I came back with my big green fuzzy glasses on, ready to wave to those campers, just excited to be in this environment that I hadn't been in in so many years. And it has been exhausting to keep the kids away, but it has been such a joy. And that's, I walked into this thinking that it was for the campers, for those elementary schoolers. And what I've seen is that it is just as important for those high schoolers. They're learning leadership, but they're also learning how to have fun and how to be kids again. So it's been a blessing from little all the way to adult because I look forward to Wednesdays every single week. And those kids, they know to wear their masks, they know to keep their distance, but they also know that they get to come to camp on Wednesdays and be kids. And I think that's the biggest takeaway is that things almost normal for anybody right now, but camp is a constant every single Wednesday and they can't wait to be there and we can't wait to see them.
Allison with my 4H jersey, she was a high school.
Oh, you didn't have to give that.
I'll just say it.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Cash. I'm also an employee of Rapid County, I've worked at the high school. Not only am I one of the leaders with Jenny, Lacy and Allison, but I also have two sons in camp, one's a camper and one's a counselor. So I'm kind of get the whole package deal there. As Jenny said earlier, I work with the fifth and sixth graders and I also have the job of giving the homework and making sure they have something to do for 50 minutes every Wednesday. And it's a challenge sometimes, you know, just, you know, they want to play, they want to do, who wants to do homework when you're at camp? But they were really, really good at it. Kids, they bring their homework, they look forward to that one-on-one time with their counselors, they know that they can get that help if need be. I've had a, a sixth grade boy who would camp first start it. He was kind of like, "Oh, I, I'm not doing this. I don't want to. I don't want to do this." But by the peer mentor, by the mentoring and the role models that our counselors offer, you know, they did such, the friendship and the bonds that they have created with these kids, that's turned his outlook around completely. Now he can't put a book down. He wants to read all the time. He wants to be like them, you know, he wants to, "I want to be a counselor one day. I want to get good grades." So he knows that next year, he has the potential to maybe be a CIT at 4H or maybe one for Wednesday if he can still have those. For me personally with these kids, their excitement to getting to see their friends, remote kids who get to come to camp to have that interaction with other kids, the excitement that they get to have to make something for mom and dad or learn a value or skill at one of the workshops, it's just, you can't forget that. It, it warms your heart. In the tough difficult times of COVID, these kids are prospering and excited to be there. They wear their smile, you can see that big smile every morning from under their mask. They're singing their camp songs, and they're just having a blast. We're wearing our masks, we're staying six feet apart, we're washing our hands like crazy, jacked hands, everything. Hands washed between everything, those kids are washing their hands. And they're having fun by doing it. It doesn't bother them, they're used to it, it's like a second nature. And, you know, sometimes we need to remind it. And there's such a routine that they're like, "Hey, Mrs. Cash, you gotta wash your hands back." So they know. And parents know as well, they can, they can bring their kids to camp in a fun environment. They can learn, they can have fun, they can be safe. And they can, they know that they can get their belly full. And some days, they really leave there with a really full belly, especially if they have cooking class. My name, for the person, has come out of his shell being a counselor. He has really grown. He has loved working towards for the younger kids, loved it. He looks forward to it every Wednesday, it's helped him grow as a person. My first grader loves getting the additional homework type with their site work, writing it on the board, doing it in the shaving cream. It's just been an all-around great time, yeah. And again, we wouldn't be able to do it without Jenny. And her motto is, "We got this, we got this, we got this, we got this." And we can do it, and we love, we have this. Thank you.
Let's move it up, sorry. A little tall. I follow all of that. Like, what do I have to say? That was the perfect explanation of this camp. My name's Lacy Jenkins. I oversee the kindergarten and first grade cluster. I'm also there as representative of the My Future Foundation. So I'm able to formulate our schedule around activities that are geared towards teaching them not only in the classroom when we do activities, like yesterday, at the time capsule. Activity that we do with them, it was fantastic. It's so good to be with them and not just behind the screen to them. So we cater to that at camp. These kids are counting coins in kindergarten, they are adding coins, they are finding things in nature to sort. They are recognizing what they look like, size and shapes, dollar bills, up to that. They are doing phenomenal. And my teens in my cluster, I cannot ask for a better group that I get to oversee and work with every single week. They are phenomenal, every single one of them. I had the luxury also of having so much trust in them that I can leave at some point, either take pictures in other clusters of the other groups. I don't know how many times a day Jenny and myself and Allison, Stephanie are running clusters, cluster. What do you need here? What are we doing here? It is an all hands-on-deck event, and we all come together every single week. It's amazing. Everybody should be jealous. If you're not there, you should be jealous of Jordan. It is fantastic. Jenny is working her tail off, we're right there with her. It's been amazing. These kids are smiling through their masks every week, you can see it in their eyes. The workshops that we do, they're taking tangible items home every single week to show their parents. My five-year-old is in my cluster, Fludala Poo Poo, and Astronauts. And he comes home, and my two-year-old is singing Peanut Butter Risa Cup in the tub every single night. It is just, it's an ongoing thing. When we were in the after-school program as well, we were Perono Noa and Six Feet Away and Peanut Butter Risa Cup and all that. And it was awesome. And I'm just so grateful to be a part of this and grateful for you guys for letting us continue into next spring. And we will not disappoint you. Thank you.
Jenny, you and your team, you know, we're the ones that are grateful for. It's a great blessing to our community and to our students, and we're grateful for the way you all work.
We have a quick slideshow.
Quick slideshow.
Say quick, I know we've gone way over, so I'm sorry about that.
Any questions?
People, you'll do this five days a week.
Five days a week.
Yeah, all right. You know, a lot of us during this time have felt like we've learned some new things about how we can teach, how we can interact, how we can interact better and learn better. And I do really, I know you said that a little tongue-in-cheek, maybe we can do something like this in the future, but, I mean, maybe we can. I mean, I think it, you know, it shows, all that you said supports it.
Well, thank you again. I know we took a lot longer than I thought, but I appreciate the time. And I'm so, so glad to be able to talk to you about this.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Excellent. Well, we are thrilled with the Wonderful Wednesday camp. And as Jenny had mentioned, we've been wrestling with ways to make sure that this can continue in spring, because it must continue in spring, knowing that we're gonna have to operate under these different conditions for quite some time, you know? And it's been so essential. This and other programs like that, that we're looking at, enrichment opportunities and headwaters in the after-school program and all of those things, now more than ever before are so integral to the whole child learning that we're perpetuating with this. So we were able to find some of our own CARES Act money thanks to the supervisors recovering in the first semester and taking that heavy burden off of us for a lot of those items we needed to reopen safely. So we were able to free up some of our CARES Act money that we were holding. So Spring, Wonderful Wednesday camp can continue in the spring. So we know we have the funding and it can happen. We also have some grant wheelers out there too to help support it as well, so, yes.
What's the backbone number you mentioned? Are you, are you, 100, is that about the number?
100, well, they could give up and hit to 100 campers and about 40 counselors. And that's about all we could take for, right, so that we can maintain the, the social difference.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Good evening.
Okay, so, well, we created the agenda, a budget item on here that I mainly wanted to keep on the agenda because we were dealing with the Valley Health Anthem debacle. And it was just such perfect timing because during the day, as I was literally sending out the local choice anthem options and what the cost analysis looked like, if we had to take on out-of-network providers and things, what that would look like to the employee, we were going to follow up with a survey and literally, right before I was about to do that, I got the phone call that, "Oh my gosh, they just made the deal." So we're thrilled that Anthem and Valley Health did come to an agreement. That saves us so much. Stress and anxiety based on our rates, we have had no increase over the last four years. In fact, this year, we saw a decrease in health insurance rates. Doesn't happen, you know? So we were very concerned with switching carriers, not having our local pool, looking for different options and what the budgetary impact of that would be. That's a lot, so, phew, that takes one stressor away. So the budget update is happy news that that happened. And the only other update for budget I have to report is last night at the supervisors' meeting. They did free up some of our contingency dollars, the amount of $60,000, to pair with our staff wellness grant in order to give bonuses for all of our employees before Christmas.
What was their, I had to leave, but what was their rationale for not freeing up the rest?
Well, their quarter two numbers are not in just yet. So they want to be sure that that meets with some of the nervousness with the business and lodging taxes and sales tax and things. So when those are in, you know, it looks all good, they just wanted to be sure that that was in. So Chair Smith did speak up and say, "Well, we need to do something, and why don't we meet in the middle and compromise somewhere?" And she, she certainly brought that motion to the floor and everyone unanimously voted for it. So that's wonderful. That's a great message to the staff, it gives them some economic relief before the holiday break. Our teachers are already getting the 2% increase that we had already found in our budget. Now, should that be released, they're looking at the end, January. Should that be released in that January, February timeframe, then we can do the 2% increase for the rest of the staff, retro-activate it back to December, and we'll get it in. So, and all, I mean, the projections look good, so it looks like the revenue for the county is strong. Any questions?
The Anthem agreement is good for three years, it looks like.
Yes.
At which time they'll be negotiating again.
Which is a normal timeframe for these things. Usually, they're just not so much in the public eye as this one has been. But these happen all the time, and we were assured by Pierce Group, this is very normal. You know, the carriers and healthcare providers kind of play game of chicken until they get to that amount. But that doesn't help the employees who are dealing with this.
I don't recall it happening with such a little amount of time left. Has it always been that way? We're in the last, we're in the last few weeks of the...
Apparently it does. And usually, there's just not much, it's just not out in the public eye very much. But these deals usually happen before. But yeah, you're right, usually it doesn't last that long, right to the, the last minute. And what I understand, there was some, you know, very public letters that went out about it. So I think that, that led to that kind of grandstanding on both sides. But whatever it is, I'm so glad they worked out their issues and we can continue on because, yeah, I can't see, I, I don't know how Valley Health would probably make it without Anthem, CrossFit Shield, and the local choice, which so many of our local government and schools, and I think Walmart, somebody said, in the, in the valley. I mean, it's, that's a big deal, that's most of their clientele, I would imagine. So, good news. And of course, we're gearing up for budget season. So next month is the month where you generally find out a little bit about what the governor's proposing and what funding streams are going to come in, how they're dealing with schools and basic aid and coronavirus relief and all of those things. So a lot of unknowns still, but everything that, all the preliminary readings that I see in the legislative packets and things look like there will be a lot of relief still coming to schools to, to continue to support the school systems throughout this pandemic and ongoing even into next year. So how much and where and how, when, we don't know yet, so we'll keep you updated on that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, reopening update. Let me pull up my slides here. All right, in this update, we'll go over the recent numbers in the pandemic dashboard, talk about our four-day phase-in model. As you remember, we left off that we were hopeful to be able to do that in January with the K to 2 population of the student body and then move on to the third through fifth graders and then the sixth through 12th after that, watching two indicator periods, which is two two-week indicators, so a month apart, basically, just to make sure the mitigation strategy is still held and that our safety precautions were working. So we'll talk about that. I will be asking for a calendar adjustment, which does take more action to do based on what we decide tonight. And also, just a quick update about the staff wellness grant and even more ways that this grant is being used to support our staff. So here's our dashboard trends, and the data does not look good, and even in our CDC school metrics. So as you can see, our primary indicators, particularly our cases per 100,000, which is a skewed indicator because of our size, but still, that is concerning just because the percentage of jump and increase in that doubled. So looking at that rate is concerning. And then the percent positive rate in the community, 8.7%. Now, it's the school metric dashboard, that doesn't mean it's our school numbers. This is the community numbers that help you, the schools, make decisions.
Primarily a rappahannic number?
This is rappahannic, yeah. So these are the rappahannic community numbers from the dashboard.
It's not the rapidan?
No, this is rappahannic, yes. Just rappahannic. So this is the highest we've been so far. So that's what, what we're looking at. And remember, we set very clear metrics to be able to move forward. We need all of our primary indicators, other than the cases per 100,000, understanding that, that can make big jumps either way because of our size. But our percent positivity has come up quite a bit. So that's something to be aware of and mindful of. And then our secondary indicators, we're still in the red for the change in cases. It's on a downward trend from December 1st to December 7th from the pandemic dashboard. But the occupied hospital beds related to COVID has gone up too, and that's in the yellow now. So, and, and just looking around at our new cases each day and things, that is concerning in the community. So we just have to be aware of that. And also in our schools, the schools are doing a great job. So let me first say that we've had four cases that we've reported out of, four cases since we started. So that rate, what is that, 0.5%? So that's a wonderful, wonderful school community rate. But what the CDC guidelines tell you to do is really look at your community metrics because that can tell you how or project how that might affect your school opening. Doesn't mean you have to close schools, it just means to be aware of how you have to mitigate and what your numbers look like. And what we've done so far to contain it has been working very, very well. But then it begs the question, should we continue and try to bring more in during the surge? Should we wait and see? Should we, so these are the questions we ask as we look at this data. As you know, we're on remote learning at the elementary... As you know, we're on remote learning at the elementary school right now, we've had a positive case in the primary wing. We had a few people show up symptomatic, luckily so far all have come back negative that have reported back to us. But when it's coincidental to that isolated area, that can be a potential outbreak. So remember, what outbreak means is just two interrelated cases, just two, in the same area. But that's where you really want to focus and contain. So even though I don't have a confirmed outbreak, because we don't have confirmed positives, we did have symptomatic individuals in the same area, so for us, we escalated that up just to say, okay, we're going to treat it that way, be careful, mitigate and isolate just to make sure. And that's why the elementary school is on distance learning for the remainder of this week, just so we can watch it and make sure. And that's according to our safety plan too, on how you deal with mitigating that. So our phase-in recommendation for four-day, because based on the metrics we set before, is to not transition all K to 2, starting in January right away. And actually pushing off the all transition until February. So watching January really closely. Now remember, we're going to be coming off of a longer extended break. So if we use that same trend data that we saw with the Thanksgiving break, which was a much shorter period of time away from the schools, and apply that same logic, then we can probably expect a similar rise in cases. So we're wanting January to watch that and just be careful and sure that we can move on. However, that doesn't solve the problem that we know we have, which is the instructional gaps, especially the literacy foundation for our most vulnerable learners. So we still have an alternative to that that we'll discuss in a minute, so we can kind of compromise on it. But we know we have to prioritize four-day for a K to 2 at this time. We're going to try to accommodate four-day requests as are appropriate. As you remember, we sent out our survey to parents to see if there's any changes that they would like to request to make. Doesn't mean that we can promise that we can accommodate everybody, it depends on numbers, you know, their academic achievement, the situations in the family, a lot of different factors that we look at when considering these. We have a lot of flexibility at the high school because we're developing a whole new second semester schedule, so that helps us have a little more flexibility. And we'll talk about another reason we have more capacity now in just a moment. And we need flexibility to adjust as metrics allow. Maybe going into the end of January and going into the spring that the vaccination rollout happens a lot quicker, you know, COVID gets back under control more quickly and then we can go back to a more normal schedule for more students. But each board meeting, I'll update you on the numbers, what's going on, and we can make those decisions together and gather information from, you know, our families and our teachers and staff. So the requested adjustments look like this, and there's not many as of today. Now, the survey is open until Friday, and we asked parents, don't take the survey if you're happy with the way things are. We just want to know if there's any adjustments you would want to make for second semester. And not very many, 59, to switch to four-day. So the bulk of people wanted to switch from either remote or hybrid to four-day instruction, and those are all spread out across the grade levels. So realistically, we may be able to accommodate most of these. And if you remember, we were able to accommodate our most at-risk students right from the beginning because we did that application process, so all, we have many of those students already on our four-day model. So we're looking at these cases very closely, we can accommodate all of them. Of course, it has to, like I said, it has to deal with the numbers and the principals are looking at each grade level and what the capacity is. But not as many as I had anticipated, which tells me that most of the student population, the families are doing well with this model.
They've adjusted now.
Yeah, they've adjusted and things are going better, and I'll show you some more data, that's pretty promising too. So prioritizing instruction for at-risk students in K through 2, Lisa and Jen have worked really hard on looking at this data with me, and what we have decided that we could do based on these numbers, and this, these are pretty low numbers for students who are at risk at this time that we need in for four days of instruction with specialized intervention, which tells me the teachers are doing such a great job, parents are doing such a great job supporting their students. So what we'd like to do is look at these students, absorb them into regular classrooms as numbers allow, and then for the overflow, we're going to bring on an additional teacher. And also have the reading specialist work on targeting intervention with them, so they will get the four-day instruction just in a separate classroom. So we're not raising the class sizes, but they get that specialized interventions that they need for the month of January as we continue on, we'll look at that some more. But we have a former teacher that we can, that's kind of on deck for this purpose, we have CARES Act money we can use to pay for it, and our reading specialist has spent a lot of time analyzing this data to provide those supports. So I think it's a nice compromise, we're not, you know, stressing our systems and mitigation procedures, but at the same time, we're taking care of the instructional need that we've seen based on our data after having a semester in. Questions about that, what we're proposing to do?
I have. Ask one?
Go ahead.
If you go back to, to the phase-in recommendation?
Yes.
Would it be possible to phase-in K-2 for two weeks in February and then three, five, or the last two weeks of February? In other words, take two weeks off of that. You could get two weeks in and see how things work.
Yeah.
As opposed to waiting a whole month for the third grade.
We could look at that, the hard thing is you won't get an actual trend until you have two indicator periods. So that's why we set the two, two-week indicator periods to determine, determine the trend, is it an upward trend or a downward trend? But yes, you could do that. You know, it's just more, more students, you know, in the same room. But we can revisit it in January and look at how these things are to make that, those changes.
I mean, that could be a possibility.
Anything is possible, we're able to do those things, but the phase-in approach, little by little, measure, make sure it's working, everybody's staying safe, you know, we're not having high numbers of quarantines.
Thanks, Larry. So while, while you're considering, I'm sure you know all these things, you're going to have your team together discussing how to be pulled this off, what's wise and what's not wise. So could you also visit the idea of, you know, the high school operates as an autonomous facility and whether that can be moved up? Because it does operate autonomously as far as the reentry procedure would go.
Right.
So could it be done in a more parallel fashion? Or is it going to cause too much stress on the whole infrastructure because of trying to do too much at one time? I don't know. Could you visit the idea with your, with your team?
Absolutely, and we have been discussing that option, and you know, there's transportation pieces of that too.
Yep.
And then in the building as well. But the high school has been pretty good at accommodating most of our four-day application requests based on need and also inviting those in who we really just need to see to help migrate and get through. But we have more flexibility, like I said, for second semester, and that's their goal, is to try to get students in that we know really, really need to be in school. But some of our high schoolers are flourishing and, you know, we should obviously keep the remote learning option available this year for those students too. But yes, we're.
So you're, the difficult thing's going to be, the next time we meet, you're not going to have the data, because we'll have been out of school, and then by the time the school reunion happens, you won't have a period to review basically.
Well, I'll have the community metrics. I just won't have, yeah, we'll have that still.
Nothing related to?
But that's what we've been looking at to help make us, make these decisions. So I will have that and we'll have the week after we get back from rate to look at that and see how our, the health of our school community is doing and our staff, you know, which is vitally important to be sure we have enough staff.
The second week of generated community metrics might be really bad.
Yeah, and that's what we need to look for, so we just got to watch that pretty carefully. So that's what we plan to do. So we still are going to prioritize, prioritize instruction for our at-risk learners, especially in those vulnerable areas with an additional staff member in different space.
ESL.
Right, and those, special ESL have already been offered the four-day option from the beginning. So remember, we've always had that for, for those subgroups of students. These are the ones now that we're looking at, that we have a semester of data under our belt, instructional data, now we can make response to intervention decisions about with the help of the teachers. And this number could change depending on how many can be absorbed, and we're looking at different data sets too. So we're pretty excited about this model, I think it will help without adding to the strain on the mitigation procedures and things and keeping those class sizes down still.
So there's a dedicated, another dedicated classroom available?
Yes.
Space available for that. That seems like a good solution to add to that.
Right, so meeting that instructional need without putting on additional burden for the, the risk of transmission at this time. Okay. So accommodating additional students at the high school, the auditorium is done? Wow, that's wonderful. And the seats, the lecture seating is great too, so it's already, it already has been used for some testing and bringing, spreading out larger groups of students for instruction and things, and they're using this in the planning for their second semester too, so thrilled about that.
Every seat has a little desk?
Yes.
Yep.
Looks like your garden.
Not yet, but it's cleaned up and we have new tile. And the ceiling looks lovely, we got all that fixed too, so.
The picture looks fresh.
It doesn't it? Yes, it's been cleaned really nicely. We're hoping to do the carpet too before the end of this fiscal year with some of the capital monies we've been able to free up, so, yes. Okay, so the calendar adjustment recommendation that I'll ask you to vote on is actually, actually changing some instructional days, so that's why it requires a vote from the board. So we're asking to change January 5th and 6th to be teacher workdays, and changing January 7th to be a Cohort A Distance Learning Day, with January 8th being a Cohort B Distance Learning Day. So we'll resume in-person on our regular hybrid model on January 11th, with the exception of having our separate group coming in on the four-day that we've determined, plus making the changes before that. So what we're doing is giving sort of a distance learning week, but also that week we're looking at, working with the teachers, looking at data, setting up our curriculum, really assessing very carefully the health scope of our workforce and as well as our school community. It's giving our tech, our staff much-needed time to collaborate and infuse some new curriculum for the second semester and plan those interventions that we talked about, really geared toward addressing some of those gaps. And allowing some additional time to close out semester one, so we're allowing more time to get some things in over the winter break too. So we need time to close out grades, get that work in. And also, a lot of teachers have, you know, do this during the winter break and work so hard over that, we want them to know, winter break is your break. Don't do anything related. So they, they need that, they just need time to decompress, be with their families, you know, have the joy, joys of the holiday, you know, come back refreshed, because this breakneck pace has been excruciating for them, and they, they do it with a smile and they, they work so hard. What's been great to see though is how well our students are achieving. Like I said, those were very small numbers of students who are being identified at risk at this time that aren't with us, and we started SOL testing at the high school this week, and the scores are coming back very high. So, I don't want you to sound surprised, but it's just with the model, you're never sure, it was just a little nervous. Well, wait till it's all done, but from what we saw, I know, it's really great to see. In fact, based on some of the new criteria for pass rates and verified credit, we're looking at a couple of classes already with 100% pass rates, which is phenomenal, that's incredible. So I'm so proud of the staff, they've worked so hard and the models are working, parents are doing so well, supporting their kids and listening to guidance from the teachers and principals. So what, we found a, you know, a model that's actually really working, it's just, it took a little extra time quarter one to stretch out to get our, kind of get our footing and have everyone get used to the model and adapt, but it's working.
What was the original start date?
The original, we had, January 4th was the only workday, and January 5th kids would come back. So this way, we'd have the 5th as an in-person workday, and then Wednesday is sort of being a distance learning day, getting your class sets up, just like our wellness day that we've had, and then the Thursday or Friday instructional, distance learning day. So it just gives us that extra time to set up, gear up for the next semester. And that's what I'll ask you to be approving during the action items for that calendar adjustment. And if we're, I don't really need a vote about the transition model, we just need consensus about that we agree that that's kind of the way we should go.
Any questions? No? Any questions?
All right, and the staff wellness grant. My pictures disappeared. Don't know why that happened. I had pretty pictures.
I've got mine.
You have it on yours. A second? It's no fun without the pictures. Just give me a second, go through my gazillion files here, okay. No? Still not there. I don't know why that happened. All right, well, if it's on yours, it's probably on this one. I apologize. They were there when I was at the office. Hooray, okay. There we go. Okay, so the staff wellness grant, as you remember, we were able to give turkeys to all our staff members for Thanksgiving and also have a Thanksgiving farmer's market with some of our local farmers, so that was so well-received. And part of that wellness grant is to help to collaborate with the community and infuse funds to support our community as well. So our next initiative launches when teachers go off on break, and it's Operation Gift Wrapped. And what this is, is a collaboration between the businesses of Rappahannock and the school system. And what this is going to be is that all school staff will receive vouchers for using at-local Rappahannock businesses. They'll get passports used to track shopping activity and win great prizes. We already have over 25 Rapp businesses that are participating. Virtual shopping opportunities will also be offered, and that's going to run between December 18th and January 31st for our staff. So we're really thrilled about this initiative, and I sent something to staff about it just today. Teresa Wood has been wonderful in working and collaborating with us, and we have businesses who are really stepping up to the plate to donate some wonderful gifts and prizes and giving us wonderful discounts on, on the things we can use our vouchers for. So really looking forward to that for the holiday season. Any questions?
Very cool.
Nice.
Good.
And that concludes my reopening update.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
You're welcome.
Moving to report, the headwaters representative?
Hey, I have a brief report today. I can, just have to find it. I spoke with, yeah, with the director of Headwaters earlier today. Headwaters has suspended the after-school for this month out of caution, the same, to limit the mixing of separate school cohorts, and they will real, we evaluate in the new year what, what to do with after-school, but it was a successful brief program. And also, Headwaters is partnering with RAC to foster the start of a middle school drama program coming up this coming year, which will be another exciting collaboration. That's what I have.
Right, thanks. MVGS?
We did meet.
Did.
How about that?
We did.
We do, we've selected a new director, Mrs. Huff. I can't remember where she was from.
Is it Huff?
Down south Virginia somewhere.
Allegheny?
Allegheny, maybe so.
I think so. Ms. Kelly Huff, yep.
Yeah.
Can you spell that?
Pardon me?
Is it Huff?
H U F F.
H U F F.
F.
And Mountain Vista has decided to go totally virtual through the third quarter, so they're just going to stay third quarter all virtual. We, we lost our financial guy to Spotsylvania, that's going to be a hard loss because he's, he was wonderful. But we'll find somebody, I'm sure. All right, what else we got? Nothing, that's all we did, isn't it?
Good. Well, thanks, thanks for, thanks for reporting that, and the next thing on our agenda is this statement of economic interest, which Amy has made sure each one of us has a copy of, and those, just to make sure, they have to be filled out after January 1st and before?
February 1st.
February 1st, and returned to you.
Yeah.
All right, so that'll be our goal, to get them back to you at the next board meeting, right? All right.
Do you want to explain? Do you want to explain what that is?
What's that?
Do you want to explain what that is real quick?
Oh, yeah, who wants to know?
Okay.
Every year, elected officials and government employees have to fill two of these out every year, have to submit a statement of economic interest, which is basically a Every year, elected officials and government employees have to fill two of these out every year, have to submit a statement of economic interest, which is basically an accounting of your investments, your land, your, basically, any kind of financial portfolio that you might have gets reported so that they can look for anomalies and make sure that you're not, you know, you're not an agent of some company or something that's, you know, it's just to make sure everything's above board. And so, there's actually a financial penalty if we don't submit it on time. Not that we don't submit it, we don't submit on time, there's a penalty. And of course, it's against the law not to submit it at all. You basically forfeit your seat. So, it's a good thing, it's an exhausting form, and I bet you get used to it. Anything else, anybody? Do you enjoy it particularly, and you wanna change your buddy's mind about it? No? All right, VSPA conference, report back.
Yeah, we, actually, the virtual policy meeting went much quicker than the ones where you sat in there all the time. We were done in about 45 minutes, so that was a good deal. If you go back and look at your, and I'm just, I'm not gonna read these all off, but if you look at the legislative positions that are in your packet, the ones that were voted on, number one, number four, number six, and they all passed by 100%, primarily had to do with, number one had to do with a behavioral interventionalist that we already have, and we might be one of the few that already has that. Had to do with volunteers, and that was amended. And number six had to do with yeah, access to electronic textbooks and adequate activity.
Yeah, good.
And that was it.
Thanks.
Lot less
Hey, while we're on information, so how does a dozen eggs and some meat end up on my, where did this come from? From Larry?
Yes.
Oh, thanks, sir.
That's the first of the Bell Ridge Farm stuff.
Is this pork? Is it pork?
Some of it is.
Some of it is.
Some of it's beef. We do beef, pork, and egg.
Not used to showing up at a board meeting with eggs and frozen meat.
Yum.
It's a great surprise. Thank you, Larry.
Bell Ridge Farm was a good, it was a good year, so there you go.
I'm not reporting that on my statement of economic interest. All right, moving on to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board this evening? Anybody? Gary's coming up. It's always good to hear from you, Gary.
Couple of quick things. One, I'm glad I came tonight, because remember, we're in our second year of a partnership, a three-way partnership between you guys and Family Futures and Headwaters. Three years of Jenny Capsa gift from the private sector to you guys.
Yeah.
Thank God. We had no idea. We knew it was gonna be great. Dr. Grimsley saw an opportunity and had no money. And so, she invited a couple of us to get our heads together and said, is there any possible way that with the profile of a graduate coming online, and Headwaters losing Kat Habib for next step, and Family Futures just beginning, is there any way that we could create something that we could get Jenny Capsa to stay in the county and be part of this? And it came together, and we committed, each of us, $90,000, which isn't chump change if you're a small nonprofit. Largest pilot that either, well, Family Futures was brand-new, but certainly the largest commitment Headwaters have ever made in this kind of an arrangement, and we were able to get Jenny to say yes. Imagine this past year without Jenny Capsa. So, that's just one little example how some creative thinking on the part of a dynamic leader, that engaged community people who are interested in supporting public education, really has been a win-win. So, I just wanna put that on the record. Jenny is a one-off, amazing, creative person, and you heard the testimony that supports that. Think of the benefits, the ongoing gifting that comes out of this Wonderful Wednesday program and the summer camp program in a time that is really very bleak. So, at Christmas time, I rejoice that we have been able to have this kind of collaboration, this kind of partnership, and this kind of result. So, that's one. The less positive news is that Headwaters is extraordinarily frustrated that we have additional resources, money. We could do additional programming, but that every time you try and do something, you run up against health and safety concerns because of COVID. And the younger the children, probably the more the support is needed, although I don't know, the tweens and the teens are suffering, too. Everyone's, it's a tough time. But as you try and reach out to the younger ones, the challenges are more manifest. So, with both the after-school program and the Rapp Kids enrichment initiative, there are people willing to help, there's money available, we are having a tough time cracking that nut. We are still optimistic. We will have a meeting this week with Dr. Grimsley. If we can find space, and right now, school facilities, probably, we don't have a community center really in Rappahannock, we don't have a lot of private spaces, we thought maybe we could use churches, that's not gonna work. But if we can find spaces, we can probably find volunteers or stipendate volunteers to do enrichment pods, and we can probably make this happen. So, that's on the horizon. No one knows what COVID's gonna do in January, but either way, I can't imagine the need for enrichment will go down. So, we're working on that. The after-school program, again, our success was our downfall. The program expanded because there was such need. In some ways, it overwhelmed our physical space, and it also overwhelmed, threatened to overwhelm our staff. And before we put any child at risk, we said, hold it a minute, we need to regroup. So, we hope to reboot in January, but that will depend on whether there's sufficient space, whether we reduce the number of students. You know, it was heartbreaking away, because we had more than a dozen kids for whom English is a second language. We were dealing with little ones that clearly weren't benefiting. I don't think any child didn't benefit from the time, but we wanted to be absolutely sure about health and safety. So, we're working on that. But we hope that, in the same spirit that we've had so far, we'll find a way forward, and that by the time, maybe your next board meeting, we'll be able to report that we found a way forward. We're not going away, we're still working at it, and we've got some very good people. We just have to find a way to make sure that when we say to parents, trust us, we're doing the absolute best we can to keep your kids safe and healthy, they can trust us. That's the most important thing. So, thank you for your continued support, and we hope we'll have more good news. But wasn't it fun to listen to the report about Wonderful Wednesday? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Please come closer to the mic.
Come close to the mic and tell who you are.
Cassia Gaynor. Stonewall District? I don't know if that's right. Do you? So, I just had a few questions that I was wondering if you guys could answer or think about. So, I know for up at the high school, we're trying to have mass breaks in almost all of our blocks, and I don't go to school for a majority of the day, I go in for the last hour, but my sister talks about it sometimes when she comes home, and just because of how bad the weather, well, it's not bad, but it's getting a lot colder and stuff, they're not going outside, so she has to wear it all day long without breaks. So, I didn't know if there was something you guys were planning on doing that way, since it's gonna continue to get worse, most likely. And then also with gym for all the underclassmen in the high school, how that was gonna work while it's winter time, and if they're actually going to be doing physical activity in the gym, or if they're just doing textbook work until spring hits, or what's happening with that? That was my question.
Very good, very good. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you. Anyone else? You know, when I was a student, there's no way I would've got up to speak to anybody. I would've been so scared, I wouldn't have been able to do it. Anyway, you're a very brave young lady. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the calendar adjustment?
Move.
We have a motion. Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post no? And so ordered. Is there any new business? Our next board meeting, I think, is the 12th. I don't have the calendar here. Hold on.
That's correct.
Is that right?
You've got it right.
January 12th. At 6:30, back in this room. I would assume we're gonna stay here until things rectify.
If you'd like to, yeah.
At this time, we'll have a motion to go into closed session. I think Mr. Grove has a motion, and we're gonna be in closed session for
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen or 20 minutes, and then we'll come back into this room and conclude this meeting, if you care to wait, 15 or 20 minutes. Mr. Grove?
Move the board convening to closed session for the following purpose: to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified positions, dismissal of a classified position, personnel 2020-21-02, and discussion of a mid-year review of the superintendent's performance pursuant to Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post no? And we'll take recess. We're gonna
This is related to the motion we're discussing in closed session.
Rachel Bynum certified.
Rachel Bynum certified.
Wesley Mills certified.
Lucy Amira certified.
They're gonna certify.
Is there a motion to accept the personnel report as it was presented this evening?
Move.
We have a motion from Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
Either way, Lucy Amira has a second.
Okay, Lucy Amira's second. This, this personnel report was related to substitutes, and all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post no? And so ordered. I believe there was no other motion related to closed session for us. No motion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move. Second.
Mr. Rubin has the motion, Mr. Grove has the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post no? And means adjourned. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.